Okay. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, October 9th, and this is the regular meeting of the next school district. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 25th, 2018 regular meeting?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, Les, Jacqueline, and Liz. We have a moment for public comment, but without the public, we're going to move on to reports and discussions. We'll start with policy. I continue reviewing all policies. I'm just going to finish the... There was nothing major or significant that we saw. Changes, very small changes, changes. This is the official side of it. The important thing, just one small thing Joe was going to check on about the policy grounds maintenance, just that's our practice that we do the same day. Anybody have any questions? Communications, those are mine. We tentatively set times and topics for our coffees with the board this year. Our first one will be in November, and we'll touch on student social emotional wellness. January will be long-range planning, and late March, we'll try to do something around the budget. We're keeping a fourth one open as a possibility in case something comes up late spring. We are... The second school climate survey is going to be administered this month, so our big push is to get parents to participate. And I saw the first email from Ed Davenport today, so we'll do full court press on social media and e-blasts, et cetera. We also talked about the possibility of developing a parent report to teachers from the secondary level, much like chancellor has. It's just a way for parents to communicate changes in the family, something that teachers should be aware of about students coming in year to year. So Joe is going to talk to the principals and guidance counselors to get a sense of appropriate questions. PTSO back school picnic was a great success on a beautiful day, and we talked a little bit about the BOSIS capital project, and all agree that it's an opportunity for BOSIS to educate the community about the services they provide. I'm not sure that families who don't have kids in BOSIS really have a good understanding. And it's also an opportunity for districts to advocate for exempting BOSIS capital projects from the tax cap. That's it. Okay. Any questions? And move on to finance.
Okay, so we met last week, and we had quite a lengthy agenda, actually. We discussed the Rhinebeck Pine Plains Redhook Shared Cafeteria Services Agreement. I know that there were some questions that came up between the time the packet came out and today, so maybe we want to cover those sometime while we're talking about these minutes. We reviewed Dr. Rick Timm's presentation regarding changes he is recommending for the foundation aid formula. The presentation's in the packet, so hopefully you had a chance to review that. He's making a number of suggestions regarding changes to the formula. In my mind, I don't know if we'll ever see any of those happen, the way our legislature works, but good suggestions. We got an update from Tom on the lunch reimbursement rates from the state and federal government. Apparently, there's been an increase of a few cents per lunch, depending on which type of lunch.
A little over 2% increase in the federal reimbursement. State remained the same.
We talked about ESSA and the New York schools transparency. Tom gave some updates on that. We got an update on the accounting software, new accounting software. Still working on plans to cut over to a new system at some point. We looked at the budget calendar for the 2020 budget, or 1920 budget, and discussed the assumptions to be made about regarding the budget. And we looked at the Haldane budget format, and we talked about possibly incorporating some of their language or literature that they have about different parts of the budget into our budget documents. So I don't know if we want to just talk about the shared services agreement now or not.
Yeah.
So the agreement is between the three school districts. We're sharing our food service director and a clerical employee. The two employees remain employees of the Redhook School District, and the two other school districts, Rhinebeck and Pine Plains, pay a percentage of the cost of those employees. We pay less of a cost for the clerical employee. Tom can elaborate on that because he has more details than I could remember, but...
Right. In the initial agreement, we were 1/3, 2/3 with Redhook. In this situation, we're 25%, Pine Plains 25%, and Redhook 50%. But one of the things that changed in the program is there's no additional time for Larry, per se, but he needed a full-time clerk. And we never used the clerk before, and they thought of different ways we can use it. So we're going to use 1/12 of the clerk, and what they'll be doing is helping us obtain substitutes and other, you know, cafeteria substitute employees and employees, and also are going to be working to help us recoup the negative balances by having her as the clerical person reach out to those families who may accumulate some monies. I mean, we'll try the traditional way of letters and emails, but we will... If that's unsuccessful, we'll be looking for her to start making some phone calls to see, and if there's a situation, if we need a payment plan or something, I can work with them to do that type of a thing. And if the number... And if that's unresponsive, then we'll be... The principals will get involved with the... Potentially with the social worker on our side. But we'd be only looking to do 1/12 of that cost for the clerical person.
Other questions, or...
So overall, are we saving money?
It's a little bit of a savings. It's still a savings. It's not humongous savings, but it's a couple thousand dollars less than what it was last year overall. And, you know, it will be... You know, we won't see Larry as much. I mean, I still see him quite a bit, so it's not like I'm missing him. And he's there for all the functions and the likes of that.
Well, that's certainly working out of Redhook.
Oh, out of Redhook, yes. Yeah. And they'll be given access to our... I want to say collection. It's our point-of-sale system, and it has all the contact information in there, so. And we're trying to see how it works out. And it's a one-year agreement. It's one year, and if you feel as though it's not working out, then we can revert back to the Redhook/Rhinebeck agreement.
See how it goes.
Any other questions for finance?
I have some question on the budget calendar. So last year, we talked a little bit about, you know, we moved it up from its starting point. Last year, we talked about maybe pushing it out a little bit again, so I'm wondering if you guys talked about that at all, as far as maybe that happened?
Yes, we certainly did. We talked about trying to push things out about a month, you know, not until January. Yeah, it was the consensus around the table that maybe we were starting too early. You know, before so many things were even close to getting finalized and, you know, kind of freaking some people out because we're trying to plan for stuff without knowing a lot... I mean, I think we all understand why we moved it up back a few years ago, but the consensus around that table was, you know, maybe we need to push it further. I mean, not, you know, not a lot, but maybe instead of starting in December, maybe we're not starting until January, later in January, and we have at least some idea of some of those cost impacts.
That makes sense. I'm just wondering if the board of administrative teams, we're reallocating funds or services, that maybe doesn't have to get pushed, but...
That was, I think, part of our conversation, too, was inserting that in the late November, December timeframe where administrators and marketing come to us with what additions they want to do and how they would pay for them. Just kind of stretch that part of the budget out and separate it from the budget process, which was a recommendation a year or two ago as well.
It's hard to do some of that work later.
Right.
Even though, you know, it might not come out that way again.
And we had... We didn't talk about this so much at the finance committee meeting, but several months back at the low-range planning, you know, one of our main meetings, we did talk about the budget calendar and a different approach to that. So I want to make sure, maybe at the next low-range planning meeting or two, because we're still not at the point where we're asking them for... To give us dollar figures or proposals or whatever. But I think if we want to kind of change up the process, I think we need to be very clear how we want it to work, so that I can tell them very clearly, this is what the board would like to see us, or how they like to see us do it differently than we had in the past. You know, if we're switching it up, we need to be very clear so that they understand, oh, okay, so this year, you want us to do this and this and this, not what we've been doing for the last 14. So I'm not saying it's so mystery. I just want us to be very clear about what we want them to do, so you get what you want, and they understand what you want, if it's going to change up the process. That's all. No biggie, but we've got a couple of meetings where I think we can kind of flesh out how we want that to look, and then we can present that to them and say, okay, we're doing a little differently this year. We want you to tell us this, or give us this, or build from here to there, or however we want to do it. So I just wanted to mention that.
Since it's October, that should probably be the priority on the low-range planning this year.
Tomorrow?
I mean, tomorrow, but...
That's a big thing to change, the way that we...
We can start talking about that tomorrow, certainly.
Between finance and planning. Well, and would it be appropriate to invite the administrators to have a discussion about it? I mean, they know how they put their budgets together and why they do it the way they do.
So I think that would be a good idea, actually. Perhaps I would suggest that we have that conversation tomorrow, and then maybe we invite them at the next meeting, and this will give us an opportunity to have them clear their calendars. We all have thought it through, so we're not kind of making it up as we're going along while they're sitting there. And then we can roll that out and get some feedback. I think that's a great idea.
Excellent. All right. And then I only had a quick question about Dr. Timm's presentation. Did he have sort of a strategy for advocating for his changes?
Yeah, if you do look in your packet here under 4.2.3, there's a couple pages here, four pages from his presentation. Believe me, his presentation was about 60 pages, but a part of it, he does talk about, he has two pages with the foundation aid rationale and recommendations, and he does have about trying to go to our legislators to talk about, you know, fixing this. And I think one of the things, and I don't want to get too much into it tonight, but one of the things that he said is to have a strategy with your neighboring school districts when you go to your legislators, is to try to offset yourself, you know, what two school districts do it one week, the next week, another two. Like, sometimes we're there that day, and there was a school district before us, there was a school district after us, and he says it's too much at one time for them. Rather off working in concert with your other school districts for that particular legislator is to work out with the other school districts to plan how you want to go see these. So they see them like two times a week. They see a school district with the same message, so that same message gets ingrained to it. If that message is the same between all the school districts, that may be different. And that's maybe where school boards may help with, you know, I don't know, you know, what they do. I know they have a legislative breakfast, but, you know, elections are soon, and it won't be too much longer that, you know...
The legislative breakfast is certainly another place where they can hear the same message, if that's what... If the county schools decide they all have a similar message they want to present.
Right. With all due respect to Rick Timm, and I did not hear him speak most recently, but we also know that sometimes it is a challenge to even get an hour of FaceTime with those people. And if we're too picky about, well, you meet with any of the school districts that day? Well, no, we don't want to meet with you that day. We want to meet... We won't get anything. Oh, I know that. So we kind of have to take what they give us. I think we have made a good... In my opinion, we've made a good shift from going en masse up to Albany with a dozen school districts from Dutchess County and saying, you know what, we need some one-on-one FaceTime for Rhinebeck in their offices at home. So I think that's been a good shift for us, is not to go up in a big mob. I mean, I never felt that was really very effective, but I think we've pretty much committed ourselves to staying at home and being the only school district there, even if it's only for the hour that we were able to get on their calendar. So I would just throw that out there. It's not always very easy, and Whitney will probably attest to that, or she can't now. She will in a couple of months, that it's like pulling teeth to even get on their calendar. And I remember the last couple of years, we visited Assemblyman Cahill, Walkill has been there. So I don't know whether he does that intentionally, or whether that's, hey, that's his day in the district, so if you want FaceTime, that's the day you get your hour. I think we got to take our shot when we get it, but... And the other thing, too, you may not agree with what the formula is trying to do. And for us, if you ran the formula the way it's supposed to run because of our declining enrollment and because our wealth measures are going up, declining enrollment, wealth measures going up, actually, our foundation aid, if it was to be run now, we'd actually lose aid. So one of the things is a provision called Safe Harmless. Nobody gets less than what they got before, because our... He runs it, it's over $200,000. That would be... No, I don't agree with this from a school district point of view, unless the Safe Harmless provision's in there. If not, just run it as it is.
But he's just helping districts figure out ways to advocate for themselves, or they actually...
Well, he's an advocate for small-city school districts. I mean, that's where mainly his... A lot of his work comes from. And really, what he's looking to do is he's really about... What he thinks, I agree, too, is a more equitable solution for determining state aid, not only for next year, but multiple years, so that you know what's coming up, is actually, he says that the combined wealth ratio is just completely wrong, how that works, that there's some places in the Adirondacks who have wealth measures of over three. It's the land wealth is a six, their income wealth is a .5. They can't pay the tax bill because they don't have the money to pay it. It's not the right way to do it. There is, and his way of doing it, and I see a lot of merit to it, and that's using your free and reduced numbers. That really, in a lot of ways, determines the health of your community. So, I mean, it's an interesting thing. I just don't see, you know, the legislator changing all the formulas. Federal government uses those numbers, uses them very highly to determine your thing. And actually, we picked up quite some monies in years past because of our higher free and reduced numbers. But I think we plateaued already, and I think now with the economy getting better, the numbers are probably going to be around the same, and probably heading downwards a little We'll see.
Any other questions for finance? All right. Curriculum are also mine. The administrators and people personnel staff received an email from a parent, and who is also a mental health professional, about the possibility of piloting mindfulness meditation in all three schools as a way to, you know, help kids self-regulate during changes in lunch. Marvin said he's seen this in some schools, and it's used as a sort of restorative practice, and it supports more pro-social behavior in kids. It could also be used to well-manage stress, especially, you know, given what we're seeing in our schools. So he had also said through the CDE process, he's been working with different subcommittees, and they've been talking about this for about a year or so, and there seems to be some genuine interest in finding some ways of introducing this kind of thing. So Joe's going to reach out to our people personnel staff to see about whether or not they would be interested in working with this parent to develop some ideas. Marvin also shared the completed list of some of the projects. Eighty-five to ninety percent were submitted digitally via Canvas or Google Docs or Word. The list of everything is here.
Here in your packet.
Yep. Jacqueline asked how you're going to better support students with limited or no internet access, especially given flipping classrooms and working and submitting homework online. So I think we have to sort of come up with some sort of universal understanding between parents and teachers and students about their abilities at home to get work done. We have computers in the school, and there are ways around certain of these issues, but kids need to be able to talk to their teachers about what they have available to them. We also touched briefly on a new Bard Early College High School, London Hudson. Conversations are still ongoing. The cost to have a student go there is about the same as the CDI program, but the transportation is a huge lift for us. If we were the only school to be sending kids up there. So it's still in very early stages of conversation, and nothing has been determined. And Bard Early College High School, the cost is more by district, not, you know, like a bridge program, where families are responsible about their costs. So we have to look at all these things carefully before moving forward. And we've got a long list of things to talk about throughout the year. We'll come away at it.
Is it not for the bridge program?
Is it like what?
The bridge program?
No. Yes and no. It's college study. Yes. No, because kids go to the bridge program, they pay the tuition themselves, and they typically are there for the entire day. Not always, but often, they spend a day at Dutchess, and at the end of the year, they get a Rhinebeck High School diploma, and they continue on with their college studies toward an associate's degree or whatever. The difference, again, is that parents are paying the freight there. In this model, it's actually a BOSIS program through...
What's the BOSIS up there, helping? Questar?
Questar BOSIS, thank you. So we pay the tuition like we do for an occupational education program, and then... So there's no cost to the student or the parent. We get whatever BOSIS aid we get per our BOSIS aid ratio, so we get some of that back. I mean, it's not a ton. Other school districts that have a lower money/wealth ratio get more of that money back. But those are the... And the other way this is set up is they're talking about if we were to participate, they're talking about our students being here for a class or two, like first and second period... First three periods. Maybe three, okay. Immediately leaving at the end of third period, and they have to go straight there. They can't deviate. And then, once they leave there, they got to come straight back to get the buses to go home. So it's tight. We can't go with another school district. We have to provide our own transportation, no matter what, because we can't deviate out of the way. Unless... Unless, yeah, I know, unless a school district came to us and left us at the end of third period.
But they'd have the same problem with it.
And then they came back to us first on the way back. We would have to be the first pick-up and drop-off to make it work. Unless they only do two periods in an hour. There's a lot moving on. I think the key is Redhook and Jordan Town want to participate. And there's been some outreach to those school districts, and they're both... They're a straight shot north from here to there, so it'll depend on the start time, the end time, where the pickup point is, yeah, if they've got to drive five miles out of their way over here, then that's going to be a difficulty. So as you said, it's still in the process of being worked out. We've expressed our interest to the Bard folks, but I think the biggest impediment, even perhaps more so than the transportation, is going to be the money. Before kids go, there's $40,000, give or take, plus the cost of transportation. So that's the... I think that's the bigger lift, is the finances, but we'll see.
Is this student then getting a principal diploma and additional college credit?
Uh-huh. Bard college credit. And again, their model, without getting too deeply into this, their model is for kids to do that for two years. So by the end of 12th grade, if they start at the beginning of 11th grade, they can have the, in essence, two years worth of coursework under their belts. Then they can transfer to someplace else, or go to Bard and continue there.
It's a great deal.
It sounds like a really wonderful program, but we'll have to see financially how it works out, including the transportation situation. So good that you know about this and understand what the constraints are that we're going to try to see if we can follow around at Bard. The other issue that's come up is how many kids would go? Would we limit it to X number of kids? Would we say four kids, and that's it? Or five? Or leave it wide open, and then what happens? And we have 12 kids go? Yeah, it's fraught with all sorts of issues like that, so we're looking at it very seriously, but we have not committed yet. We can't commit yet. The other thing I wanted to mention, if I could, I'm not sure I'm talking way too much here. Just so you guys are aware, we are sending Ed Davenport, Marvin Krebs, Fern Lox, and Emily Davison to a four-session workshop that started today. Today was the first meeting, and there's going to be another one later in the winter, and then one in February, and then one in April. There are four. It's a series of four at the New York Westchester BOSIS in Yorktown. So we are sending those four administrators to be trained in this model of social emotional wellness, so in terms of, you know, we're trying to position them to have that under their belts, so when they come back here and start implementing some additional things toward that goal of social emotional wellness. We want our administrators to be well-schooled up on how that works, what it looks like in school. So just letting you know that today is day one, and that we have three more sessions before the end of the school.
I've seen this question from Jacqueline about home internet access, asked a number of times. Have we... Have we have a sense of what the magnitude is? Is that something communications can take up so we can get a sense of what we're dealing with? And that might help with how to fix it?
I don't know that it would fall to communications necessarily, but it certainly will, except for Steve Johnson being on that committee. It would seem to me that polling teachers, they're gonna know if they've got kids in their classrooms who are struggling with access. So, and you know, Jacqueline was pretty frank about their internet access being pretty spotty also. So, it also depends on geographically, how good your services. But, you know, I don't think it would be no harm or foul asking teachers if they have a sense of kids in their classrooms struggling.
John had made a comment several months ago, pre this conversation, about internet access for middle school kids. And it sounded to me like they either done some kind of a survey, maybe it was just teachers asking kids. I'm not sure exactly what. But that's why I made a note here that when we discuss this tomorrow at our administrative meeting, I'll ask John. He may already have some data for the middle school and then we can talk about how we generated that and maybe push that out to the high school, to the elementary school, just to see.
I vaguely remember this coming last.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I think Sarah Wheeler's English class or journalism, they're taking those Pro books home, I think, right? So, she might be a good person to start that as well, to see if she's experienced in any...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we can move on to the NISBA proposed bylaw amendments and amendments. Anybody have any thoughts? Yes, Mark?
All right, so I actually had time to thoroughly read through these today. There's a couple I want to draw your attention to. I don't, we don't need to necessarily discuss them tonight, but I want to put it on your radar so that you can think about it and maybe we can have a more detailed discussion about some of these next time. So, I think the most important one is Resolution Three, which is, it's on page nine. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association supports legislation to improve school safety by reducing access to guns. There's already been a suggested amendment to this resolution and there's some information in the rationale that discusses with the advent of 3D printer technology, it's possible to produce a gun on a 3D printer. So, as the person who has to be on the floor, where this resolution and probably several iterations of amendments may be proposed, I'd like to, you know, have your thoughts on how you feel about it so that I can, you know, vote appropriately when the time comes. You know, it certainly makes sense, but I think NISBA doesn't want it to be a debate about, you know, gun control or gun ownership, but more so how to, you know, keep schools safe by limiting access. So, think about that and next time we can discuss it a little further. The next resolution is number four, which is on the next page. Talks about proposals to allow districts to adopt an earlier start to the instructional year with earlier dates being eligible for state aid. That certainly makes sense. I know we've had some discussions about that, you know, over the years. There's, again, a proposed amendment already. So, that's something else to think about. And then, Resolution Six, which is on page 12, is about proposals making kindergarten attendance mandatory. Just that, you know, kindergarten isn't mandated at the moment. So, you know, particularly in the consideration of budgetary issues, making it mandatory is gonna, you know, lock that cost into school districts that may not be able to afford it at some point. Not that, you know, I would propose that we eliminate kindergarten, but it's something that's out there if there was a need for whatever reason, you know, some catastrophic thing happens and we suddenly don't have the funds for it, you know. But if it's mandated, then that's a cost we're gonna have to deal with. I think there was one more. I'm gonna look through here. I mean, pretty, most of these are pretty, make sense to me. I thought I had another one marked, but maybe I didn't. So, at any rate, I would urge you to at least look at those three resolutions and, you know, give me your thoughts on those the next time.
And I think for first proposal three, Resolution Three, I just think it wasn't, you know, where they're going with this. It wasn't really flowed out very well. And I think it's a mistake. It sounded like different opinions. I think it may come from something. So, I just don't...
I think...
And so they didn't tie it into schools enough.
I think it's purposely vague because they want to get the opinions of school boards that are out, you know, what's out there.
Yeah, I'd actually like to see how this plays out. I'm sure it's a debate, but it's like, it's okay. I didn't have any problem with any of the rest of them. Even what I'd say was not favorable. It wasn't recommended by the committee as a mandate. And that's the end of training school boards. And not because it's not the topic, but only because, you know, we need any training with the school members that tends to support. If you're gonna start there, there's probably listed things that you can say support, members will need to know. So, that, I just don't really think it should be mandated. I mean, I think these trainings should be available, but if it should be mandated at some point, it would be cool on that.
Yeah, I would say that since it's not recommended for approval by the Resolutions Committee, the likelihood that it, you know, unless some, a couple of school boards feel very strongly about it, it's probably not gonna really make it very far on the floor.
I had a question on page... Joe, it's quite a lot for you. This is proposal twenty about changing kindergarten age. I thought we were gonna talk about that here. Schools are the control to change that. So, I just wanna, like, I guess I understand why the law can change schools to have the ability to change that themselves.
Again, maybe, I don't know, but maybe they want that to be a mandatory age. Apparently, the mandatory age is December 1st. So, maybe they want everybody to start their program at September 1st or October 1st. I know we had actually, pretty recently, and he was on the way down from the holiday, and on the way down, had a conversation. He had resurrected this conversation that Brett King had brought to our attention a few years ago and I think at least, well, I'll say at least some kindergarten teachers supported then and I think still support now. And that is to move that age up. Perhaps one way to consider that is, you know, to move it up a month, a year, for several years to bring it ultimately to September 1st. But there is an impact, financial impact, when you do that. So, yeah, like a lot of other things, it has to be very carefully considered. I think the research, there's research to support starting soon. You know, take the kids in who have birthdays earlier than December 1st. But, you know, with every, with every study, there's another contrary study. So, I don't, and maybe perhaps that resolution is going towards, well, let's just make it whatever date, October 1st for everybody and that's it. And school districts don't have a choice. So, I'm not sure exactly what the intent is there.
Yeah, that one I came up with, the words, it's definitely...
Yeah, yeah.
Did anybody else have any comments or questions? The only one I had a question about was Resolution Seventeen on page eighteen. Resolve that school boards support legislation that would substantially increase the earning of the issues of retired police and other law enforcement officers who are serving as school resource or safety officer. My question, I guess, is where's the money coming from? School boards are gonna have to find money in their budget to substantially increase the pay. I don't know if there are guidelines about what SROs make now, what they can make, depending on their qualifications.
My understanding, my understanding is that... Excuse me. The way it is now, it varies from police agency and it varies from county to county. And we had a discussion in our last superintendent's meeting where Dr. Handler from Pioneer Plains, part of whose school district is in Columbia County, they're either getting or looking into getting SROs from Columbia County and their either per year rate or per year rate is less expensive than what that county charges. So, I don't think there is a standard... Well, there is a standard, but obviously there isn't. So, that's, I'm not sure whether this is going at that idea. The only discussion I've heard connected with that, that's getting any kind of traction out there in the bigger world, is a push to allow retired police officers to serve as SROs, to carry their service revolvers, you know, to be pretty much in every way as an on-duty officer just because there don't seem to be enough qualified people out there to meet the need that, you know, this rash of school shootings of late has gotten everybody scrambling to look for people. So, if that opens up another pool of potential employees, I'm guessing it may be less how much they get paid and more about, okay, now you can hire these people. And they can come into a school district and they can carry their service revolver and now this gives us another pool of people to do that work. I think that's, that's where it's going.
Can I turn this one off? Once they're retired, they can only pay thirty thousand a year. So, if you wanted, say, to have some of the time, you know, you should have it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, they can't get their... They lose their pension once they're...
Yes, yeah. That's, that's... Well, if that's where that's going, yeah.
So, if you want to have that, then you should get retired then.
Yeah.
Want the same guy there every day? You want that consistency.
So, I have one more, which is Resolution Sixteen on page eighteen, which is a resolution supporting legislation to allow school districts to have their school district elections at an accessible location within district boundaries, but not on school property. Which makes sense. But, you know, it's, I think you're gonna see that more and more if there's ever legislation to allow that.
Makes us to major.
Well, obviously it's come up here.
It's consistent with having people in your building or your... All right, so I guess if we can put this on the... One more time before we...
And that's what we'll have. It wasn't a shot at it.
Yeah, good. Okay. We can move on to good news. Does anybody have any good news?
So, I don't know if it's... See, I think the issue was either... Well, I think this is the earliest it's ever been out.
I think that's the second one, actually.
This is, oh, issue one.
Oh, issue one, okay.
The second one is online, I think.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, I mean, it's, as always, the content is great. They do a great job. They put it on TV and on the web, it's digitally and then it's available.
If I could just amplify your good news comment, I will just point out with any, without any editorializing, that the school newspaper is now linked more closely with the journalism class as opposed to strictly a club. And the teacher of the journalism class is also the advisor to the school newspaper. So, there's a connection there and I think that's why we saw this out so early in the year and I think you'll see them more frequently. And I think since it's a spin-off from a class, I think you'll see an uptick in the quality and the issues that they tackle. So, I think that's great.
No, and I think it's fantastic. There's soliciting, you can put some kids from, you know, the entire school. So, it's really great. Saw them at the PTSO.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
All right, other good news?
Well, you said that the PTSO function was good. Is that good news?
Yes, that is good news.
I didn't make it to it, so I, but I heard...
It was a beautiful day and it was a nice way to kick off the Andy Bennett weekend and it was good.
Except for the mushiness.
Except for the mushiness. The fungus is a little mushy. But, you know, what we could...
It's actually raining, so...
Whatever.
The sun goes out. And I think our team did quite well through Andy Bennett also. The varsity soccer one. I think we had a successful Andy Bennett weekend.
Another thing, I thought our breakfast board was well-tended. It was nice to catch up with our staff. They are exciting things they're doing. I think it means...
It always feels too fast.
Yeah. I mean, thanks to those of you who were able to come. I mean, it's a conflict for some people, but I think it sends a good message to the staff that many of you are able to be there. So, thank you for being here.
Nice to be able to talk.
Yeah.
All right, any other good news? Old business.
Want to talk about it?
Sure. So, we've had some discussion about the Lower Hudson Education Coalition and the fact that they would like us to join. In fact, all the Dutchess school districts, they would like to join. It is made up of Dutchess school districts are, you know, part of the coalition. But they would like the Dutchess schools to pay dues, which I think is about eight hundred dollars for the year. So, there was a presentation on the coalition at last week's Dutchess County School Board Association meeting. There was, one of the officers from the Austin School District was there as well as two representatives from the lobbying firm that the coalition has hired to represent them in Albany. I felt that they made a pretty compelling argument for Dutchess school districts to join the coalition. I actually brought out our issues with the BOSI's project and the fact that any money that goes toward the, our cost of the BOSI's project would come out of our tax cap and that we would really like them to advocate for that law being passed where the BOSI's capital money would come out of the tax cap. They had already, they had already brought it up before I even, you know, presented our issue with it. And so I know they're thinking about it and they're trying to make it happen. But, you know, I thought they made a good presentation. And I know Joe brought up his position with, you know, what we discussed in our last meeting, why we haven't been members of the coalition. And they answered his questions and concerns and... members of the coalition, and they answered his questions and concerns, and I felt that would be reasonable for us to consider joining.
Yeah, I did a fair amount of whining on your behalf. I mean, it's, I'd be honest with you and tell you that it's been a sore subject for me since I've been here in Dutchess County. And I don't mind saying in front of the camera that it has been, in my opinion, it has been very Westchester-centric and not so much Dutchess-centric in my personal, based on my experience. They have really reconfigured the whole coalition. They used to have a, an individual who was a, thought she was a full-time employee, but she's pretty darn close to full-time lobbyist, who worked for them, and she was based in Westchester County, and it was, in my opinion, a lot about Westchester County. And I asked them, I was pretty point-blank about it, I said to them, I said, "I want to walk out of this meeting feeling like, if we join, that you're going to represent Dutchess County, and that we're not just an afterthought, or, you know, those hayseeds up in the northern of the region." Because that's the way, that's the way I felt for a lot of years. So this is a different group, I like the fact that they're based in Albany and not in Westchester County, so already they're, they're on the right side of the geographic tilt, I like that. The one woman I was sitting there, she looked so darn familiar to me, and it turns out she had been until recently an ISBA employee, she now works for this firm, and they're lobbying, you know, an advocacy firm, and I, I gotta tell you, I mean, maybe I'd have to eat my hat or something, but I walked out of there feeling like, yeah, I think we made the case, and it would be very, it would be very easy to tell if they're not living up to what they told that whole people the other night. So I agree with Mark, I think that it would be a potential positive for our district to be a member of a coalition that has professional lobbyists who know Albany, they know the people up there, they know how that process works, and they know we're watching. So I would, I would support becoming a member of the coalition. And so, it goes, I mean, we're not locked in for 10 years or anything, you know, it's a year-to-year thing, and if we're not getting our money's worth, then we can just, hold yourself, see you later, we'll take care of it ourselves. I think that could be helpful to us.
So which counties are they representing other than Westchester?
Westchester, Rockland, Putnam, and Dutchess. Those are the four counties that are in the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendent's that are in this Lower Hudson Education Coalition. They're also in that coalition are the school boards associations from Dutchess, Putnam with Westchester BOSI's, Southern Westchester BOSI's, and Rockland County BOSI's, so those folks are, they all have skin in the game. I just want to make sure we're being served. And not just Ryan, and all of Dutchess County, we're not the only ones, but we have a lot in common with other Dutchess County schools, and we're going to make sure our needs are addressed.
I should point out that they were very, you know, they made it clear that they're very interested in representing the needs of all the school districts in the coalition, so if a couple of school districts presented something that was an issue to them, they would work on it for, on their behalf, which I think in the past probably was not something that would happen. They were very interested in making us feel like they were going to work for us.
Steve?
So a question, were they specific on some of their items that they wanted to be pushed through, like, what's the commonality between Dutchess County and down south? I mean, if we're number seven, eight, nine, you're not going to go to a lobby firm and argue 10 things to, you know, legislature every year. So what was bubbling to the top at that presentation, and is there overlap with some of our bigger needs?
Yeah, well, I think there are some commonalities, probably not the least of which is state aid, and in some ways, many of the Westchester County schools are in even more challenging shape than we are, so that's certainly something they can meet the needs of many of their constituent school districts, including Ryanbeck. You know, maybe not so much some other school districts, and not every school district in Westchester County either, but I think there are enough that that's something they could go after. And I thought Mark's, just to give a couple of examples, I thought Mark's example was exactly on point. We're in Dutchess County, our BOSI's has a capital project going out there, we're the ones who need some relief from the tax levy cap. There isn't anything like that happening now in Westchester or Rockland, and there could at some, at some point in time, but this is something that's going to impact all of us, so we need you to start rattling some cages up there and start working on getting that, getting that outweigh removed in the tax levy cap. So that was, again, was, and Mark had marketed rates on bringing that up, and they acknowledge that, that, yep, that's an issue you guys are going to have to deal with. So we'll see. I mean, you know, they're not miracle workers, they're not going to get us everything we want, but you know what? If they try, make a good faith effort, and get our needs out there, and could be a good thing, no guarantees.
They would probably advocate for changing the combined wealth ratio.
Yeah, I think so.
Definitely, I think it's right up their alley for what, I think it would be a good for the Hudson County.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on membership?
I don't think you need to vote on membership, I don't think it's required. I would, I would like some indication from the board that this is something you want us to pursue. I mean, it's not like a $50,000 a year expenditure that you should get your approval for, but I don't want to just go out and sign us up and then have a bunch of you say, what are you doing that for? So we talked about it in a couple of meetings. So I would just like to know what the board is, easy enough for us to send our check with the written voice, and then we're in, and hopefully others are as well. Take a store vote, or whatever you want.
Yeah, positive, really cool.
Yeah.
Give it a shot.
I mean, especially since it's only, you know, we're not committing for more than a year. If it doesn't work out, then that's it.
Having professionals working on our behalf is not...
Yep.
All right, do they have meetings or anything with this?
Yes, I think they were talking about, there are representatives from each of the counties. The representation is...
High Westchester.
Well, it is, because they're more school districts in Westchester than there are in Dutchess County, so I mean, I kinda, I kinda get, I kinda get that. They're, I'm trying to think of who the, well, Kelly Lappin is the, is the Dutchess representative, and they're looking for a superintendent to be a representative, so don't look at me like that. But anyway, they are looking for somebody like...
In southern Dutchess County.
Well, you know, there's all sorts of people there, so there will be representation, but it is weighted heavier towards the more populated counties, I understand that. All right, so then we'll move forward. Thank you.
All right. Again, no public comment. Other, any other?
Yeah, I have one quick point. We already talked about two of the others, this, the Lower Hudson Education Coalition being one, and the BOSI's capital project vote being another. We talked about that quite a bit in our communication committee. But the one I wanted to mention was that the superintendent's conference day that's scheduled for Friday the ninth, no, Friday, November 9th. The first one's October 19th, that's, that's, the one on the 9th is going to, the plan is to have the school climate survey done in time for them, them being the folks from the senior school, whatever, yeah, no, Columbia, yeah, for them to have the data to present to the staff on November 9th. Now, we are meeting the following Tuesday, November 13th, that's our board meeting. So I'm thinking now, if everything goes according to plan, that that might be a good board meeting to present that data to the, to the Board of Education. Just kind of a heads up, and you know what? If they wind up having to push out the, you know, the deadline on the survey, then it might not work out that way, but I just want to kind of give you a heads up that that's what I'm looking to, to plan for that, for that meeting. And it'll probably be a, it won't be a short meeting.
Would you have them come up here to present?
I'd have to talk to Marvin about that, and I'll ask Marvin whether he's comfortable doing the presentation, or whether they'll schlep back up, and what charges to schlep back up, so we're going to have to work out the details from now on. Yeah, the 13th of, did I say the 19th, I'm sorry?
No.
It's the 19th, and then the 13th, the 13th, on Friday. Well, our meeting is the 13th, right, the following Tuesday. Okay, so I just wanted to mention that.
Well, just to piggyback on that, just for anybody who may be watching this, and for all of us, if we can promote participation from our parent groups, it was really, really low, so as to be not really useful information last time, so if we can promote folks doing the survey, getting it in as quickly as possible, that would be great. Okay.
Well, on the same lines, I guess, of the goals, too, we talked about having an interim report, so within five, six weeks into the school year, so is there one scheduled for the next meeting or two?
There isn't, since we just approved my goals at the last meeting, but I've already been working with the key planners amongst the administrative team to start working, so I mean, I can certainly set something. Remember, we're doing the audit report at the next meeting, but I can, at the risk of overloading the meeting, I can set up something for that meeting as well.
Yeah, I think we also talked about staggering those updates also, so it wasn't full press every time, so.
Yeah, because that'll get, that'll get tiresome, we're doing that at every meeting.
All right, so anybody else have anything before we go into action items? All right, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Anyone who wants to approve anything? No, any discussions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve a modification of the leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Kelly Lynch, having commenced on August 2nd, 2018, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave for the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing through October 29th, 2018, or thereabouts, to the extent of her approved sick leave, and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid child care leave, the leave period now to be extended through November 16th, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve a modification of the appointment of Ellen Tormi Landivar as a long-term substitute in the position of special education teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 4th, 2018, previously until October 29th, 2018, now to be extended through November 16th, 2018, at pleasure of the Board at Step 1 MA, $60,225 appropriated in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2018-19. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the extension of the leave of absence granted to Kelly Lynch, special education teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the 2018-19 superintendent's administrative process?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I thought it was a good redraft.
Yeah, yeah, you know, your issues, and then Laura and I talked briefly about a fairly minor tweak to the lower range planning to make sure we include those things.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent schools to approve the appointment of Jennifer C. Muhammad to the part-time .40 FTE position of academic intervention service mathematics teacher assigned at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective on or around November 7th, 2018, or sooner if available, in the tenure area of elementary, at a salary of Step 6 MA plus 6, $70,867 times .40, appropriated from the effective start date, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2018-19.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. Are we...
I don't have any.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? We are done? Thank you. Anything?